Okay, I will call to order the November 24th Special Meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I would ask Mr. Christopherson to please note the roll call. And at this time, would everybody please rise, face the flag as Gracie Warren leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Our first item will be the adoption of the agenda. I have a couple more items to add to the agenda. Under new hires, we need to add Jay Elwine as Boys Basketball Activities Volunteer. And in resignations, where it says Josh Lean Head Volleyball Coach, we need to add and Middle School Track at the end of the season. With those changes, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
I'm moving to second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Or, yeah, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's adopted. Moving to our dates to remember, November 26th will be an early release day. November 27th and 28th, holiday break, no school those days. December 8th will be the next Board of Education meeting at 5:30 here in the IPC. December 10th, early release for district in-service. December 24th through the 31st will be a holiday break, no school those days. January 1st, holiday break, no school. January 2nd, holiday break, and classes resume January 5th. We had no request for community input for items not on the agenda. We also have no conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers, so we will move to our consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of the following: consideration and approval of the bills. We have six new hires to the district that require Board approval to be covered by our Workman's Compensation Plan. We have two resignations for Board approval. Hannah Dixon, a sped pair educator at the middle school with one-year service, December 31st. And Josh Lean, head volleyball coach and middle school track and field, six-year service at the end of the season. We have an advertising agreement at the Huron Arena with the Bowman Agency for the years 2025 through 2030. That would be the consent agenda in its entirety. It can be passed with one motion, or if any Board member would like to pull any item up for further discussion, they may certainly do so.
Move to approve consent as presented?
Second.
I'm moving to second to approve the consent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, motion carries. This time, I will turn to our superintendent, Dr. Steinhoff, so he can celebrate the successes in our district.
Thank you Chairman Van Berkom. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to Taryn, the Administrative Activities Office Administrative Assistant, and Nate Tomzak on the recent birth of their daughter Scotland Kate. Congratulations to Jacob, a teacher at HMS, and Lucy DeShack, a pair educator at Madison on the recent birth of their daughter, um, I don't have that her name. I apologize. Congratulations to the following football players selected to the 11AA All-State Team: Senior Running Back Landon Holst, Senior Linebacker Oakley Anderson, Senior Defensive Back Riley Winiger, and Junior Anderson Porish, who played quarterback and safety for the Tigers this season. Congratulations to the following football players selected for 11AA All-State Honorable Mention: Senior Mason Jurgens and Senior Charlie Martin. Thank yous this evening go to all special education staff and observance of Special Education Day on December 2nd. Thank you to Matheson Gass of Watertown for their donation of five new welding helmets, three Bernard MIG welding guns, four boxes of earplugs, a Miller TIG torch, and various replacement parts. Thank you to the South Dakota State Fair for providing fencing and ticket booths for state cross-country last month. Thank you to high school teacher Rita Cook for organizing the High School Veterans Day Assembly on December, excuse me, November 10th, and to the VFW for providing a color guard to the high school musical groups who participated. And a special thank you to high school pair educator Deb Pearl for giving the Veterans Day address at the assembly. Thank you to the high school pep band for playing at our two home football playoff games. Thank you to Craig Slopeikas and Modern Woodman for providing caramel rolls for the staff at the Buchanan K-1 Center. Thank you to Margaret Layer for donating hats to Madison 2-3 Center. And thank you to Brenda Snyder for the donation of Tiger ticket prizes to Buchanan K-1 Center. And that concludes our celebrations this evening in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Steinhoff. Moving into Board Reports, our first will be Dr. DeBoer presenting the Classified Employee of the Month.
Yes. Okay, our Buchanan Classified Employee of the Month is Tasha Jellerson, and she exemplifies dedication, compassion, and professionalism in everything she does. Tasha loves students as if they were her own children, and she shows genuine care and commitment to their success and well-being each day. No challenge is too great for Tasha, and she never hesitates to step in when support is needed, and consistently volunteers to work with our most challenging students. Through patience and skill, Tasha teaches her students strategies that help them remain in the classroom as much as possible and find success alongside their peers. She is a strong advocate for the needs of her students, ensuring that each one receives the support and understanding they deserve. Tasha has gone above and beyond in her role as a pair educator, quietly making a difference without ever seeking recognition or praise. Her humility, dedication, and unwavering care make her an invaluable member of our school community and truly deserving nominee for Classified Employee of the Year. So congratulations to Tasha.
Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next report will be the good news report from the Buchanan K-1 Center with Dr. DeBoer, Carolyn Westby, and Brooke Kennard that are junior kindergarten teachers coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative 3: Community Outreach and Communication.
Yes, and I also asked Mrs. Guy this morning to join us, so.
Perfect.
Yes. All right. So we just thought we'd do an update on junior kindergarten now that it is live in action. Last year, it was approved that we could start this program, and it's off to a really great start, so just thank you guys again for having the faith to let us get that off the ground running, and we wanted to share with you all the good things that are happening in these classrooms. So, yep, I'm the principal, Heather DeBoer.
Brooke Kennard.
Carolyn Westby.
Lacey Guy.
All right. So we have two sections with Ms. Westby and Mrs. Kennard as the teachers. They filled up rather quickly with 18 students in each, and the students are learning their routines, and they're showing noticeable growth in their early learning skills. The teachers are reporting that the students are demonstrating, improving in the skills that show that they'll be ready for kindergarten. We're excited to see these students then next year when they're in kindergarten hopefully be role models and leaders as they start the school year. Families have also shared some positive feedback about the program. We've heard that they, too, have seen their children become more confident, more independent, and better able to navigate peer interactions just since the beginning of the school year. This is what a daily schedule would look like, and I'm going to let Ms. Westby kind of speak to this.
So we just start out our morning usually with morning meeting where we have sharing time, and we talk about things that are happening to us. Then we go to specials and have a snack. We have a recess in the morning. Then we have a little bit more of a specials time with things like music and me and computer lab and art. My class really loves art. Then we have a reading time, lunch and recess, a little rest time, calendar, math, recess, snack, and then we have about an hour of playtime in the afternoon. And then we have an ending recess right before dismissal.
All right, and so we just wanted to share, you know, there's a heavy emphasis on social skills and regulating emotions. In reading, they're working on one letter per week. They're using themes each week that relate to children's literature. And in math, they're emphasizing on numbers to 10 and introducing other kindergarten math concepts such as patterns and measurement. And this slide is Mrs. Guy, and I'll let her talk about social stories.
Yes, so I'm Mrs. Guy. I'm the school counselor at Buchanan. I go into each of the junior kindergarten classes weekly. I'm part of their specials rotation. The first part of the year, each week, I'm teaching social skills, and to do that, I use social stories. So if you aren't quite sure what a social story is, it's kind of like a mini story that uses simple words and pictures that describes a social situation with easy-to-understand language. It kind of takes you through what might happen, who will be there, how people might act, and how someone might feel in those situations. There's many social norms and routines that are unstated rules, kind of like taking turns and waiting patiently, and social stories lay these out in very clear, concrete language to help teach them. They provide help with navigating overwhelming social situations and routines, and they help build positive behavior and help children develop social understanding, empathy, and other skills that benefit them throughout their schooling. And so I kind of put the first slides of some of my, some of the social stories and skills that we work on. So, yeah, that's kind of what we do the beginning of the year, and then after Christmas, I'll introduce other social-emotional learning for them, as well as continuing to build on some of those social skills, so.
All right, and then we just have a few slides with some pictures to just kind of show what they've been up to, so.
We've been able to have some different guest speakers in. Mrs. DeBoer herself came in, and I have a student helper that comes in, and she reads with the kids and is able to do some small group activities with them. And there's some of the things they love to do. They love the Play-Doh. You know, that is a wonderful fine motor activity to get those hands a little bit stronger and ready for that writing that is coming. The puzzles. You can't imagine how hard that is for them at this age level, but when they complete them, they are so excited.
Just things that we've been doing through play in our class. We've been learning about animals, and we had a pumpkin patch store. They really liked that. That was fun for them. Just learning some more of those social skills and kindergarten standards. We love to read books and paint.
So another thing we're really able to do and focus on is the boost-up activities, which I know as a district, we were really strong on that, and I think it's very valuable for these kids at this level. A lot of them don't have their reflexes integrated yet, so by doing simple things like cross-pattern walking, heel-toe walking, making their brain slow down a little bit helps them become better students and more able to learn, so I'm focusing a lot on that this year.
So that wraps it up, and just thank you again for providing this additional year of support, not only benefits individual students, but it strengthens the overall learning environment in our K-12 system. Students who enter kindergarten more prepared socially, emotionally, and academically will set a stronger foundation for long-term success. So we appreciate your support for this initiative, and we hope to keep seeing it make good strides. Any questions?
Just comment.
Or comments.
Just pleased to see so much public interest in this program. When we start something new, you never know if it's going to sink or swim there, and obviously, there's interest and excitement in this program, so it's, this is a great report. I'm happy to see that. I've been wondering how it was going out there, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all your hard work. This was a report that I've been waiting all year to hear about. Had a lot of excitement and interest generated last year when we started talking about it, so I hope it continues to grow, and thank you for all the hard work that you guys do every day. The kiddos, again, these strides will show easily. I think they'll translate quickly into kindergarten, and it certainly benefits our community members as well, so thank you.
I think we're very excited about that, and to see, we've had comments from the kindergarten teachers themselves just saying, wow, you know, we're able to get right into that curriculum, you know, because they don't have necessarily those summer birthdays, the ones that haven't been to school, and so it's helped them speed up what they're doing while we're slowing down and getting them ready to go.
Yep. Awesome. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next report will be the Huron School District Report Card from Mrs. Peets coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative 1: Student Achievement.
Good evening. This is just going to be a brief overview for you of the report card. We've got a lot to be proud of. We're going to start with our youngest learners and work our way up, starting with Buchanan K-1 Center. We were identified last year for targeted school improvement, something that you need to understand. Last year, for the first time ever, they included scores for our K-1 Center. That's something that was unusual for us because our K-1 children don't take the state testing. And so after much work with the state, they determined that, you know, because we're a different setup than all other schools in the state with having learning centers, we're considered a feeder school at that level, and so what we're working on there is just the best we can, and one of the things that we're working on is greater attendance, and we know that by having good attendance, that's where you set up good habits for good learning. One of the things that I wanted to point out, though, with our Buchanan students is our English learners, and we know we have a large number of English learners, and we have 52% of those children who are on track, and that's a really high statistic for those children. Then we move on to our Madison 2-3 Center. This is also their second year, and you're always put on a two-year track when you're identified for targeted support. And they, we know that we have areas in both ELA and math that we've been identified for, that we need to improve on in our scores, and so being identified that we received that grant in the science of reading, that is going to help us with establishing goals that we can, we have four years that we can establish and meet some of those needs. That will help a great deal with that. But if you look at this also, our EL students are 46%, are right on track where they need to be, and 7% of those children have exited early. So that also shows how hard everyone is working on that. When we move to our next center, Washington is not on targeted support. None of the rest of our schools are. They're all in just general support. And if you look at this screen, it shows that over three years' time, we're making wonderful growth and improvement on our state testing over three years in both English Language Arts and in mathematics. And then this shows how much they improve over state testing in both of that and the measurement of our student progress, and that's exactly what we want to see with our students in those areas and how much they have moved over the three years' time. And this is another point. I know our district has always been really good about identifying growth and how important growth is in our students, especially with our demographics. And if you look at this, the state average is 56% for growth, and at Washington School, the average is 62% on growth in English Language Arts and in mathematics. The state average is 51%, and the school average is 57%. And obviously, at Madison, we can't show growth because that's the first year that they test. So at the middle school, they're doing a phenomenal job. If you look at their scores in, just on their testing, in English Language Arts, they're only 2% away from the state average. In math, they're only 5% away, and in science, they're only 3% away, and that's an average for the whole middle school. So they're doing a phenomenal job on their testing, and the progress that they're making, it is steady progress across the board in all three subject areas. We see it moving up, and that's exactly what we want to see in their testing. And then they, too, on their growth, they're ahead of the state average. At the middle school, English Language Arts, they're ahead of the state average by 4% for growth, and in math by 2%. So we know that they're showing good growth there as well. When we move on as a district, as a district as a whole, the average, our district grows by 4% ahead of what the state average is, and in math also by 4%. So we can be extremely proud of our district as a whole, the amount of growth that we make comparatively to the state average. Our high school students, our on-time graduation rate is at 82% this last year, and the completion rate is at 89%. So over the last three years, we've steadily progressed up. Our district average is just 4% below that of the state for graduation, and just 2% below the state average for high school completion. And statistically, if you look at from '21-'22 to last year, we've gone up a great deal in percentage. Some of those factors have to do with us being a lot more flexible and trying to be more student-centered in the needs of how we meet that by offering some things like virtual education and trying to meet the needs of where the students are at. That's made some difference in where we're at to be able to make this much of a growth And then the last thing that we can be really proud of with the ACT testing is that our average ACT score was 21, and that matched the state exactly. The four schools, and now this is just a survey, but the four schools that was surveyed when the students take their ACT test were those four schools that are listed there. Now, I think across the state, it's going to be a much different story next year with all of the juniors across the state needing to take the ACT test. I think those scores are going to be much, much different in our state, but, you know, time will tell of what that looks like, so. Any questions for me on this quick, brief overview, but to kind of give you an idea, I think we can be really proud of how well our students did, especially the amount of growth that all of our students district-wide have shown, and especially how well all of our EL students have shown, and the amount of growth that they've done and progress they've made throughout that program.
Questions or comments?
Definitely some great improvements there. I'm wondering, I think it was this summer, we had a group of middle school teachers that came in, and they talked about some of the work they were doing between the tests to improve some of those scores, and they'd kind of invited the rest of the district to come talk to them and maybe start implementing that in other schools. Do you know if any of that's happened at this point? Are there other schools that are implementing that program?
We have. That's a great question. They have. Those are the interim tests, and they apply directly to our state testing, and all of our schools that are taking the testing have been implementing the interim tests and taking a look at the data, and the state provided the last two years, three-year data, which shows exactly areas of weakness, areas of need for our students, maybe holes that not only are in areas of need, but maybe areas of need within our curriculum that may be something either, oh, we're not teaching that long enough or strong enough, or we don't have it within. How do we need to supplement? And I think being more data-driven has caused us to reflect more on what we need to do to improve what we do as well as how we do.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Exciting to see that graduation rate come up. Was that yours?
Yep. Yep. I was just going to say, it's good to see the graduation rate coming up, and seems like everything's trending in the right direction. It's good to see, and good job on the hard work for everybody to make our scores go up.
Yeah, this is a district success. I hope you're all celebrating for sure.
The teachers and everyone have worked really hard. I think they need to celebrate, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Peets.
Thank you.
Okay, our next report will be on the ASBSD Delegate Assembly coincides with Strategic Plan Initiative 4: Growth and Development Planning. Guess that's me. I was our board's delegate to Delegate Assembly last Friday. The votes all went exactly as we went through and decided to vote. There was one resolution that was up for deletion, was really the only one that had a significant split vote, but it still passed for deletion. And Garrett was also there as part of ASBSD, and I was the voting delegate, and it was over within an hour. I think that was probably about the, one of the fastest ones. I haven't been there for years, but I thought, I was expecting two and a half hours, but I would say probably the best part, though, was the giant brownies that were provided. So, do you have any more to add, Garrett? You were there, too. I mean, it went well.
Well, like you said, it was pretty quick. The last couple of years, we've done a lot of work streamlining the resolutions and the standing positions, and it kind of makes Delegate Assembly a little shorter because of that, but, you know, really, all the issues with public ed and what we're dealing with at the state are kind of the same every year, so there's not a lot of changes in our positions and what we're lobbying for and what we stand for, so. Yeah, the only other, like you said, CTE resolution that was up for deletion got a comment about why are we deleting this?
Some of that moved into the standing position, too.
Yeah, yep. Yep. And there was one other comment. One of our ASBSD board members is also in the National Board, just kind of got up and talked about the big, beautiful bill, and there's language in there about a $1,700 tax credit that's going to be available to schools, and it's kind of been in the news a little bit in the state, just about the fact that it's going to be available. We're signing on to that as a state, and so once the rules get established by the IRS, then we'll know what we can do with that and if we can do anything with that, but it looks like there might be opportunities for public schools to jump on some dollars there, so they just kind of said, hey, pay attention to this. If there's money available, you might want to try to do something with it, so. Really, that was only, the only discussions that were, that were really had, so. But, yeah, good time. It was good to see good attendance. I think they said over 100?
Yeah.
People that showed up out of, there's 147 school districts right now, so.
The weather was great, though, too. That helped.
Yep. And the brownies were really good.
Yeah.
Well, I have one comment, because that was sometimes a very painful, long meeting, so congratulations. That's a lot on the leadership and just making those changes and getting that more streamlined, and makes it a very effective, nice, slick meeting, so, well done.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, that's all really I had on that, so we will move to Dr. Steinhoff Superintendent's report. Goes along with Strategic Plan 3: Community Outreach and Communication.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I just want to extend a congratulations to Mrs. Peets, to the Board of Ed, to our administrators, to the staff, to the students on the outstanding data and the continual improvement. We know that it'll never be good enough until we're at 100%, and that probably won't ever happen, and so we're going to strive to always get better, but everybody's playing a role in that, whether it's the, and people that are maintaining our facilities, make sure it's a clean and friendly and conducive learning environment, to transportation that's bringing the kids safely. to transportation that's bringing the kids safely and promptly to school, to the meals that are nutritious and help the students be able to learn. All, all of the staff are part of this overall picture, and that's why we're making gains, and we hope to continue to do that, but I just congratulate all of you, 'cause you're all part of that, so thank you. Chief Layer with the Huron Police Department updated me on the status of our second SRO needed since Officer Two moved out of town. The Huron Police Department plans to fill the second SRO soon or temporarily assign an officer to finish the twenty-five, twenty-six, six school year with an office at the high school. Officer Dur will continue to have his office space at the middle school and will make visits to other schools. I am grateful for the partnership with Chief Layer and the Huron Police Department, so we should have a second officer soon. I would also comment that Chief Layer had asked and has officers stopping in the buildings and has been doing that since we've been at one officer instead of two. The Northern State University Academy, in collaboration with the Huron Community Campus, will offer POLS, P-O-L-S, one hundred, which is American Government, and Math 114, which is college algebra, from two to three fifteen PM. High school juniors and seniors are eligible to take these courses, and the scholarships from the partnership with the Huron School District Foundation, the Kiwanis, the Lions, and the Sertomas Clubs will be offered to the first twenty enrollees into those courses. Like in past years, I will attend the statewide superintendent meeting on December third in Oakoma. The meeting follows Governor Roden's budget address, which is scheduled for December second. And last but not least, I wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving on Thursday. My list of things I'm grateful for far outweighs the list of hardships. Gratitude is powerful. Alphonse Carr stated, "We can complain because roses bushes have thorns, or rejoice because thorns have roses." That concludes my report. Back to you, Chairman Van Bergham.
And Q. Dr. Steinhoff, any questions for Dr. Steinhoff? Good report, sir. Okay, moving into old business, our first item of old business is a second reading on the first day of school for the 2026-2027 school year. I know we threw out Wednesday, August nineteenth, in our last meeting. Guess it's open for discussion and action here tonight.
I guess I like the nineteenth date, so I would make a motion to make the first day of school year August nineteenth next year.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to make the first day of school August nineteenth. Open it up for any discussion or questions that anyone has. See, and no further discussion, and we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, first day of school will be August nineteenth next year. Next item, old business, Policy GCA twenty-three, first reading on the instructional coach. And there have been no changes since its introduction. Unless anybody has any questions or concerns, this will be on our next agenda for second reading and final approval. And then we have Policy GCA twenty-four, the literacy coach. First reading, supporting documentation for policies. There have been no changes to this one either since its introduction at our last meeting. Again, if you have any questions or concerns, this will be on our next agenda for second reading and final approval. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Okay, moving into new business, we have one item of new business. That is to select our Legislative Action Network representative for the upcoming legislative session. This is a position that kind of acts as a liaison between ASBSD and our legislative delegation. They'll shoot out emails if there's an important piece of legislation up for a vote in committee or on the floor, and encourage us to reach out to our representatives to vote appropriately. I've done this for many years, but I'll open it up to see if there's any other volunteers that want to do this this year.
I'd nominate Tim to do it, 'cause he does a great job.
Sounds like a motion.
Does it need a motion, or is it an appointing?
I think, well, we usually have a motion and a second.
I would second that.
Okay, yeah, I've always taken it as an opportunity to research legislation also and bring it to the board's attention, whether it's good, bad, weird. Either way, it's stuff that could affect us, so.
I always appreciate it. You do a great job.
Oh, well, thank you very much. That's nice to hear. Okay, well, then, unless there's anything else, we'll vote. Vote on appointing me as our land rep for this year. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll strive to keep you all informed. One further item will be adjournments. I entertain a motion.
Second.
And a second to adjourn, non-debatable, so those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.